That has begun. Thank you to Jill McCannan and Katie Stein, who have stepped up from the board to participate in that process. There will be multiple chances for stakeholders to be involved in the strategic planning process. I don't want anyone to feel that if their voice needs to be heard, this is their only chance. That process will continue. There will be times we reach out to specific groups to get information, but this is as we begin our plan. And given that we want to be wrapped up in a year, we need to begin. So I thank all those who turned out for a three-hour meeting last night. I was only there for part of it, but it looked like some great work was moving forward. And we look forward from the administration on reporting back and hearing their thoughts going forward. We have a packed house tonight. I imagine some of you may be here about the issue of transportation, because I have heard from lots of parents on that. Let me just kind of let everyone know where we are in this process. First, the board has heard you. Any comments that have come in have been sent around to the entire board. This is a multi-pronged process. If there are individuals who feel that their child is unsafe, the board is not the place to come, because the board does not have jurisdiction over individual matters. You need to go to the superintendent. And I know Dr. Adley has spoken to some of you and is happy to guide you through what that process looks like. We encourage any parent who feels that their child is unsafe to have that conversation, because the safety of our children is the most important thing to all of us. The second step is a review of the policy. A review of the policy is always healthy, but the board really needs information in order to do that well. So what I've asked from the superintendent is to talk to the police department, to review our bus routes, to see if the police department has any concerns of safety in any particular areas. When that information is complete and can come back to the board, we'll make that information available to the board members, if there's any areas of concern. Second, we also are looking at giving our entire Walker path to the town so that they can consider if they are looking at any sidewalk projects to understand where they have pedestrian traffic. Also, it was said at the last OPC meeting, we are aware that there are many projects beginning in town, and we will liaise with the town if those projects will cause any concerns with students who currently walk to schools. And I think it'll be a conversation, both administration and the town, on how to make sure, is there any particular project which is changing walking conditions? So, we hear the concern of parents. I'd just like to let you know that you really do have to consider what process you're in at this point. If there's an individual concern, please go to the superintendent, so he can talk to you. He can explain that process, which can go all the way up to a hearing officer if there are disagreements. The second side's a policy concern, and the board needs far more information before we can make any snap change to a policy. Because, as I've said to some of you, policy is a very blunt instrument, and to just make a blanket change, you really need to understand all the effects of it. What I can assure the public of at this moment, we are well within the state guidelines. And that is where also allows parents, if they have individual concerns in that state mandate, to go to the administration. So we are happy to field... When we hear public comment, we receive it. If people have individual questions, you can certainly reach out to the board or to the superintendent, and we're happy to direct you to the best way to get an answer to your individual question at the moment. But that's kind of the place we are in at this moment in time. With that, I will open it up to public comment. And again, just remember, the board receives comment but does not enter into dialogue at this point.
Okay. Before we begin, do we have a timeline on this consideration process?
So, we can take that up, but during the chair report, we're not going to open up to a dialogue. But I know the superintendent has reached out to the police department already, and I will at OPC tomorrow continue the conversations on sidewalk layouts. Public comment, please. Mr. Zagorski, I was going to add you to our agenda. Yeah, let's do that after public comment. Thank you.
And just please say your name and your address, and if you would spell your name. Thank you. Speak slowly, I'm slow.
Hi, I'm Sarah Madsen, M-A-D-S-O-N. I live at 10 Musket Lane. I'd like to ask the Board of Ed to use the money and the budget control to help alleviate the class size at the high end of the standard in multiple schools. And then my second comment is, also, I'd like to see a breakout of the revenue in RC-12, which is building rental and the use of fields. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Krista Carnes, K-R-I-S-T-A-C-A-R-N-E-S. I live at 40 Fitch Avenue. I'm just here in support of the busing issue. I just want to, I believe data rules, and it was great to hear that you guys are putting together more information. And I was hoping that some of that information could include additional issues, like kids who might have not so much special education needs, but if they have mental health issues causing anxiety. I'm wondering if, as you speak with the police department, as you speak with students who are making those walks right now... That's a very scary walk at 6:30 in the morning, or quarter to 7:00 in the morning, up into Rotan Avenue, past all those things. And if you're looking at those, as long as we're taking a holistic picture of what's going on there, I'm also curious for data on how that, the cost of the additional busing breaks down. Where did that $85,000 per bus come from? So if we could make that public, or at least that's the number I heard, so I may be very wrong. But that's, you know, what I heard. But how does that get calculated? Because my argument is, or my thinking is, if we're already having the buses for middle school and for elementary schools, we're really just adding a little bit earlier route. And how does that all, like, what's the data behind that? I was glad to hear that there's some school bus route optimization inquiries being made. And I'm also looking at sort of the impacted areas and the... Are we... Does the two-mile radius disproportionately impact certain families or certain neighborhoods? I live in a very densely populated neighborhood. My real estate values are less than many of the areas of school. There's lots of dual-working parents. You know, I've heard the line, the drop-off is very long. I couldn't even drop them off early if I wanted to. It would impact my ability to work. So, that's a more holistic issue, and I don't know how you get the data for that, but those, in addition to the issues you brought up, I appreciate you looking into. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Carol Kennedy, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y, and I live at 19 Stephanie Lane.
My name is Robin Nelson. I live at 51 Arrowhead Way. We are the budget co-chairs for the CDSP. First, we would like to thank Dr. Adley and the administration for prioritizing and working to protect elementary school class sizes during a difficult budget year. We would like to discuss the elementary enrollment data and budgeted number of sections, which is important as it relates to protecting our elementary class sizes going forward. Based on the updated 2020 enrollment data that we have received from our elementary schools, we would like to highlight that Token Eek and Ox Ridge both have seven net additional students for a total of 14 net new students that are not included in the current or budgeted elementary enrollment data, since these students started after October 2019. As a result, we are concerned that the 2021 budget may not accurately reflect the average class sizes or necessary number of sections for these schools. We would like to respectfully request that the district update the current and projected enrollment data as well as average class size charts by school in order to accurately reflect the enrollment for all of our elementary schools to ensure that the overall budget and budget control include the necessary number of sections and teachers by grade at each school. Specifically, we want to ensure that four teachers in budget control are adequate, given that we have already had these increases in enrollment, which changes the baseline on which the enrollment projections were created. In closing, we would like to thank Dr. Adley and the administration for protecting elementary class sizes and making this a priority for our students. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ally Ramstek. I live at 20... Oh, spelled my name, A-L-I-R-A-M-S-T-E-K. I live at 29 Park Place. I am here because I have two daughters in high school and one in the middle school, and I am concerned about the busing issue. I won't belabor it, but my daughter, my eldest daughter, who's a junior, called me in mid-November and said she was not allowed to get on the bus. And I thought she was lying. I thought she wanted a ride home, which I... Luckily, I happen to be the director of the Darien Human Services in town, and I was not in a meeting. I was able to leave work and go pick her up. The following day, the same thing happened, and I realized it was legitimate, that she really was not allowed to get on the bus. So now every day, I have to go pick her up from school at 2:30, since she's not participating in an after-school activity. On behalf of all single parents, I'm one myself, and dual-working households, I don't know if that's a proper term, but please take serious consideration about this issue. Walking two miles for anyone, I don't think, I don't know if anyone, if you've all driven the path from where Krista and I live over near Fitch and Park, but going down to Rotan Ave, crossing over Hecker and Maple, and then over 95, it's treacherous, especially in the mornings. I drive them in the mornings, so it's more the afternoon that's really disruptive to a working parent's day, leaving at 2:30 and having to provide transportation. Even as a driver, over that whole 95 intersection, I'm super cautious. People do not follow the rules. It's very dangerous. And I can't imagine anyone in this room wanting their teenage child to walk there. So I just appreciate your time and consideration. I have reached out to Dr. Adley, and I know that this is a big matter, and it's not something that's going to be resolved quickly, but thank you.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Lazara, L-A-Z-Z-A-R-A. I live at 40 Park Place. I was renting on Fitch Avenue up until recently. Last year, about mid-morning, I was walking to the train station to catch a train into the city. And I was crossing in a crosswalk across Nuroton Avenue, right where Heights Road intersects with it. I waited. There was no traffic. I had the light right of way. And I'm crossing, and a guy is making a left turn, and he practically hits me. And it scared me so much, because I am a single mother, and I didn't want to orphan my son, that now I walked down all the way up Maple Avenue, and I cross over Holotree Ridge Road just to get to the train station, which is insane. So I know that there's a two-mile radius, which seems reasonable from a distance perspective, but this is a service road for a major interstate highway that's notorious for a lot of problems. But it's a service road. It's not a local road. And you have large driveways that the students need to cross for the gas stations. I can tell you, it's hard enough to maneuver a car. They're watching out for other cars. But taking a pedestrian into the mix, I can tell you that a lot of cars aren't expecting pedestrians to even be in the road. It's just not a pedestrian-friendly area. So I'm very concerned about my son. My son wants to walk to the middle school from my house, and I tell him, "You have to walk up Maple and go over Holotree Ridge Road. It's safer that way." But now to go to the high school, he'll have to walk this way. And it's just, it's an insane thing that I don't think any of you would want your child to go through, especially with people with their cell phones. There was a guy just yesterday in a big construction vehicle. I was waiting to make the left-hand turn from Nuroton Avenue onto Maple. He was coming right at me really fast with his cellphone up to his head, because he's getting onto Hecker, which is an entrance ramp essentially for I-95. So you're asking these students to cross entrance ramps and service road, and it's, and people making right turns on red. Everyone wants to make a right on red. It's an accident waiting to happen. And we've already had children getting hit on post-road by cars. This is worse than post-road, in my opinion. So please take it seriously. It's just a bus, but we need a, there are a lot of kids in my neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Nicole Lyons. I'm at 63 Relahan Road. So I'm slightly more southward than a lot of the group here that have been talking, but I actually feel that we all have, we're all from a similar area where there is very much a convergence of highway, and in my case, of train and train station, and people madly racing to catch the 659 or the 729, which is directly in the middle of the time that my kids would need to leave in order to make it to school. I'm at 63 Relahan, and I think my understanding is that certainly, if we feel that our children have safety issues, we can contact the, you know, Dr. Adley and this directly. But my understanding is that you guys have the discretion around establishing what this walking radius is. And it is within, it's actually the maximum that the state allotts for, which is a two-mile maximum walking radius. But it does provide districts the discretion around whether or not to even use them. I think, if I'm correct, Wilton and Westport don't have any kind of walking radius, and that is in their jurisdiction to decide. The guidelines on the state transportation policy state that districts consider the following in developing their policies: a student's age, the walking distance to school, and the existence of hazardous conditions. So where I am, what I am speaking to tonight, I believe, are persistent, it's a condition of hazard, not just an incident that was unsafe that I witnessed. So, the current walking distance radius is two miles for Darien High School. And my house, and the house is on my street, Relahan Road, which currently has 20 kids that are going to be future DHS students. But we are 1.9 miles from Darien High School. And it takes an adult about 40 minutes to walk two miles in perfect weather without being encumbered by a heavy backpack or additional gear. So in order for my kids to walk the 1.9-mile distance from our house to the high school in time to make the first bell at 7:40 a.m., they will need to plan to leave my house before 7:00 a.m. on a perfect weather day. And sunrise this morning was at 7:17 a.m., which means that during the winter months, in addition to the hazardous conditions presented by snow, ice, snowplows careening through the darkened streets, the two-mile walking radius is actually in violation of the state guidelines, which dictate that students should not be required to walk to or from their bus stop or school within one-half hour before sunrise or after sunset.
Mrs. Lyons, you are approaching time, so I just want to...
Great. There's the 659 express train, the 728. If my child is leaving just at that time, we've got people racing to make the train, half-asleep spouses, you know, going right on red. It's crazy. And so I feel that this is not just about sidewalks. This is about a convergence of hazardous conditions that directly impact anybody who lives outside of this two, within this two-mile radius.
Mrs. Lyons, I just need to stop, because you're well over time at this point.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Just so everyone is aware, there's a three-minute time limit on all public comment.
Hi, I'm Kelly Scallon, 94 Fitch. Thank you for your consistent efforts to make Darien schools the best in Connecticut. It seems that with each survey that is released, as it was today with Niche, the Darien schools are always at the top of the list. If so much emphasis is put on educating our children, one must ask why. Is it more emphasis put on the safety of getting those children to the schools? I'm referring to the Board of Ed two-mile walk zone policy. I have brought to your attention that many areas of town have unsafe sidewalks, but with specific regard to the treacherous route that Nuroton Avenue presents, as you have just heard from many of our neighbors. As if the I-95 exits, drivers speeding to make it to the train aren't enough. The construction vehicles, which will soon be using Nuroton Avenue for daily trips, certainly are. If we are all committed to the well-being of our children and students, then why isn't this issue being fast-tracked before ground is broken on Heights Road and before the first snowfall? I implore you to make exceptions for certain areas of town. #LetThemRide. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Hello, my name's David Gartrrell. I live at 10 Dickinson Road.
I'm sorry, could you just spell your last name, please?
G-A-R-T-R-E double L. Now, my son and daughter will be fifth-generation Darien kids, which is a great thing. I'm blessed to have that in my life. But I will say that this, is I've had the pleasure the last couple of weeks is taking my kid to school in the morning. And although I sat on no committee to make any decisions about the driving and parking situation there, I'm quite amazed that I actually can get through that loop in about 10 or 15 minutes. And so I really believe the last thing you really need is another driver going to the high school and driving through that parking lot at 7:00 and at 3:00 in the afternoon. So that's another thing that I thought I would bring forward to the committee. Thank you for your time.
Is there any other public comment? Seeing that, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Well, welcome, everybody. It's nice to see everyone here. If you weren't part of the budget process or the Saturday workshop that we had, thank you. And thank you to the parents that spoke. Tonight's materials, if you don't happen to have them, they are online, just under Board of Education, under 2020-21 Budget. I want to thank the parents who completed the survey, the superintendent's survey, the short sort of three, four questions. We had a nice response back. The staff will have an opportunity latter part of this week to complete it also, and that will be part of the entry plan and also feed the Strategic Steering Committee, which I would like to also recognize the board chair, recognize the people who participated. We had a nice representative group, cross-section group of the community. And we got off to a great start with Dr. Lemmons, and we look forward to reporting back on the work. And thank you to the two board members who are serving on that committee. The next community conversation has been scheduled. People will be invited for February 6th. That's with the NCCJ as a follow-up to the ongoing discussions. So we thank NCCJ for facilitating that, and we'll reach out to the same constituents who were present at the first meeting. I also want to mention that the ADL was at the middle school today and working with groups of students. At the middle school level, when you have kids who create their own ideas of what they want to do, it creates a lot of momentum, and Anthony Defin, who mentioned, was facilitating that group. There will be an opportunity for parents at the middle school that will be forthcoming at the end of, at this point, it looks like a February-start-of-March opportunity that we think are being scheduled by ADL. But our work on this capacity and this arena continues. Our seniors, if you've got seniors, you know, the mid-years are around the corner. And do you want to just mention that last week, the high schools, sometimes, you know, the kids are good, right? The kids are great. The Honor Society Kids hosted an evening on Thursday night. Somebody's may know this, somebody's may not. That really was, I'll call it a boot camp for freshmen exams. And there was about 100 freshmen who showed up, and the kids had cocoa and their favorite snack. I don't know if the snacks were individually wrapped or not, to be honest with you. But it just was nice. There's kids who are coming out to mentor the younger kids in the high school. It's just, these things just go by so unnoticed. We don't have the opportunity sometimes just to pause and recognize the goodness in our kids and what they can do for each other. So anyway, good luck to everybody who's doing those AP exams, mid-years. Yesterday, we had the Rye Public Schools. As you know, our curriculum, I've always said here, since I've got here, that one of the cornerstones of our systems is the curriculum. And I think from the surveys and comments and I receive along the way from parents and community members and staff in general, right? That is particularly evident. So it's not surprising when other school systems come to learn about what we're actually doing. And the Rye Public Schools within the elementary school yesterday, looking at our language arts program, and I know they went away favorably impressed. The Ox Ridge Building Committee did meet on January 9th. SLAM did present drawings that reflected the Board of Education's feedback and also the feedback from the Build Committee itself. This was a very productive meeting. It's going to continue this Thursday. And then next week, next, I believe, the next Tuesday, we will be going to the State Department again. I'll be accompanying some members of the Building Committee to report back as a status report, because we are due at this point to go back to the State Department of Education, Management and Construction Department, so we look forward to doing that. There are a series of other meetings, and I'll forward those again as I receive them. We're moving a pretty quick clip. There will be a Safety Committee established to look at what are the safety emergency processes built in as an infrastructure. So that is about to kick off on about, I think, April 23rd. Portables Reimagined, just as an update, we have received bids from five architects for the portables and all those... Did I say portables reimagined?
Yep.
We don't want to reimagine those.
Keep going.
Portables and Libraries Reimagined. So we have the five reports and studies in, and we're going to call a facilities subcommittee to make that final determination and the award. We do have a number of postings that will go out this week. So if you follow these things, if you want to be a principal, we are posting the principal at, just saying, at Royal Elementary School. As you know, if you're curious, wondering why, what's happening there, that was a one-year position. We said it would be a one-year position, and we said upfront that we would re-advertise that position after a year, so that will be posted. We're also posting a high school science teacher, a CS facilitator at the Royal School. And we'll also be posting shortly for a new football coach. January 22nd, we will have the Board of Education Finance Subcommittee meeting, so that's scheduled. And Dr. De Silva has scheduled a rich variety of offerings and differentiated experiences for professional learning for our teachers this particular Friday. So it'll be a nice day.
I'm just going to take a moment of privilege here just to... It looks like a lot of our transportation parents left. But just as a reminder, there is a traffic authority in town, and if there are also, you have concerns about drivers or people passing buses, please feel free to contact them. The police will actually send out a car often. So just another safety measure until we sort this process out at your disposal. With that, we will move on to the approval of minutes. It's requested that the board approve the following: Minutes of the regular meeting held on December 10th, 2019. May I have a motion, Mrs. Stein and Mr. Deneen? All in favor. And that is everyone except for Mr. Maroney. Mr. Maroney, all abstaining. And any objections? So just Mr. Maroney abstaining. Minutes of the special meeting held on December 16th, 2019. May I have a motion to approve, Mr. Burke and Mr. Maroney? All in favor, and that is unanimous. And minutes of the special meeting held on January 2nd, 2020. May I have a motion to approve, Mr. Deneen and Mrs. Stein? All in favor. That is unanimous. And minutes of the regular meeting held January 4th, 2020. We've kept Mrs. Ritchie busy. May I have a motion? Mr. Brown and Mr. Deneen, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you all. Board committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Mr. Deneen?
The only thing I will add to Dr. Adley's update on Ox Ridge is once we get through the state meeting on the 21st... Thank you. The only thing I'll add to Dr. Adley's update on Ox Ridge, once we get through the state meeting on the 21st, we'll work to set up an update to the RTM. And we'll also work to set up a meeting with the local Ox Ridge community to present them kind of the schematic design, where we're at, and how the whole project is going. We'll include in that a lot of conversations about security in terms of, by then, we should have some idea of the timeline from a construction standpoint, what has to be done to the existing school as we prep to start the new school. There's actually bore holes being drilled over the next two weekends to start testing the property. So we need about another two meetings to get all that information organized, and then we'll go back out to the RTM, and we'll go back out and have a community meeting up in Ox Ridge.
Mr. Deneen, can you make sure on that outreach, can you ask the committee to consider, in addition to the Ox Ridge community, the ELP community? And so I'll be housed there. Thank you.
Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Mr. Deneen, what was the, after we changed the specs, what was the kind of reaction to the committee? Were you able to meet the budgetary allocations after those specs?
Look, the job, the goal of the Building Committee is to kind of work through what the Board of Ed presents from an edspec standpoint. I think part of the schematic design process we went through and kind of the management of the costs that we went through got us to a good place. I think everyone's on the same page. I think we're still working... got us to a good place. I think everyone's on the same page. I think we're still working with the numbers for those programs. And while we want to have flexible space in the building and the opportunity to expand, we continue to look and tweak at those numbers. But the first schematic design, which I was not able to attend, but went through with a group of people on Saturday just to get up to speed, looks, we're heading in a great direction.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. McCannan.
Duke, when the Security Committee gets formed, would you brief this crew on who's in it and sort of what their protocol is for going through, please?
Any other board committee reports?
Well, I, Dr. Adley stole my thunder, but we, yes, do have a Finance Committee meeting. It's on January 22nd, 8:00 AM, held here in this room, and materials will be forthcoming.
Great. Thank you. We'll move on to presentations and discussions. And I heard from Mr. Zagratzky today, the Board of Finance is here to deliver comments on the budget, so I'd like to motion for an amendment to the agenda, so the Board of Finance isn't here all evening if they don't choose to be, to include the Board of Finance report out and comments on the superintendent's proposed budget. May I have a motion? Mr. Sini and Mr. Burke, all in favor. That is unanimous. Mr. Zagratzky.
I'm a little disappointed that you've curtailed me in this way. I had planned to keep you here all evening, and you now voted to tell me that you can't do that. Just a couple of comments. I appreciate all the work that went into the budget and the efforts to keep the numbers under control at 3.46 percent. It's beyond the Board of Finance's guidelines, but for reasons that are understandable, once you take a look at the budget details. I also appreciate some of the difficult decisions that were made around personnel reductions, which Dr. Adley initiated, all in the scheme of trying to keep the budget where it is. So please know how much all that was sincerely appreciated. For our analysis and overview of the budget, just a few areas that would be helpful to get additional information on, just so we understand them better. The first one, we ask this every year, so we'll ask again, is just on excess cost. Obviously, there's lots of detail about that that we don't want to get into. But I'd point out that we had a run rate of that of about 3.4 million the last few years. It's now fallen off to 2.6 million. And just have a refresher around some of the calculation assumptions around that, particularly the estimated sort of percentage that we're going to give back, as well as just general trends in that. It's an important part of the budget and an important thing for us to be mindful of in terms of state reimbursement. So we just would like to be very clear about that as part of our analysis. The second one is just in health insurance. I know there was a shock in terms of the rates that came your way. And my understanding is that what you've budgeted is 8%, which is an assumption that you'd either get that or you'd be able to go into the state's plan. And so just having a broader discussion about that in terms of those details and what your assumptions are, and also whether it's in fact possible to transition the Board of Education staff to that plan. I'm not sure if there's some union requirement around approval or any of that, but just having a discussion about that so that we don't come towards the end of this process, determine that that's not possible, and then end up with a much higher health insurance increase than what's in your initial budget. The third thing is some additional detail just on the impact of that union contract. I think that the process was a good one, and that we were well-served by the offer, all the efforts that went into that. I'm reminded of the Mark Twain quote when he was commenting on the music of Richard Wagner, when he said that actually his music is a lot better than it sounds. So I think in terms of this contract, that this has sort of a similar look and feel. But that said, having a little bit more of a dissection about sort of the elements of that contract and how it impacted your personnel costs for this year, just so we can kind of see that. I think as part of the RTM approval process that will come up later in January, that they're going to want to see that anyway. So I'll preempt that process and sort of put that on to the table. Couple other areas, and I'll finish. One of them is just in capital spending. So you look through that budget, it's about 1.3 million in terms of projects that you've got laid out in there, and that's fairly light. I know I'm saying that in the context of spending $63 million on an elementary school, so that aside. I did notice, though, that that picks up quite a bit next year. So you've got a $4.2 million Priority One project for HVAC, I think, at the homeschool. And I'd like to just have more of a multi-year discussion on those projects, just to get a sense of sort of a three-year view on that. Not that we'd have to pay for those this year, but just so that we are engaged in a conversation about those now and can look forward and anticipate what those expenditures would be. We're going to send to you an analysis that Jim and Taylor have been working on, and this is a transfer analysis. So as we've discussed in the past, the purpose of this was to take a look at the Board of Education original budget, look at the various transfers that were made out of individual line items, line item budgets, and then spent elsewhere. And so the nature of the analysis we did was, with your help and support, we got that data. They completed an analysis of that, and the purpose of it was to see, are there any patterns to either the sources of overspending or the destination, or over-budgeting, or the destination for that spending? And what we found is there are a few places where it's relatively consistent on both sides. So for example, not surprisingly, areas over the last few years that have been consistently over-budgeted, or maybe not intentionally, but it's just worked out that way. So health insurance, budget control, special class teachers, and of course, excess cost. And what happens is, is you are well within your rights to transfer those monies and spend them elsewhere. And there are some destinations that appear to be fairly consistent over time, like long-term substitutes, computer equipment, summer school, security. We're going to send you all that analysis, and certainly the public is welcome to take a look at it. But the sole purpose in that analysis is to spur among you, just to take a look at some of those budgets and simply ask the question, is there a way to get the budgeting right on both sides? In other words, to reduce the budgets that appear to be consistently over-budgeted and maybe increase the budgets for those areas where you're consistently under-budget and have to transfer that money. So that was the purpose of the analysis. We'd love to have a more active discussion with you about that once you get the notes that Jim and Taylor prepared, which we'll get over to you forthwith. But again, this analysis was simply to spur that discussion around budgeting and the accuracy of the way we do budgets. I guess the final point that I'd make is around cuts versus stopping doing things. One of the things that's always hard in government is to make cuts at the margin in a program. An even harder thing is to say, is there any program that we simply could do without? And so I think Dr. Adley has done a good job at finding some areas where there could be some cuts at the margin. But as I've said in prior years, it's always good to just take a look at the panoply of programs, offerings, everything that you fund, and simply ask the question, are there any things that you could simply stop doing? Either because they've become obsolete, or frankly, the usage of those programs has fallen off to the point that you might consider either stopping doing something and saving the money or redeploying those resources elsewhere. So not something that we need to see, but again, we would just encourage as part of your process. So we'd appreciate any additional information as part of our review on the topics that I just covered, and we would welcome further inquiries or clarification needs from all of you, but thanks for your time.
Great. Any questions, clarifications? We'll make it a Mark Twain night. He also said, "Out of our public schools grows the greatness of a nation." So I think that's really all of our goals. We appreciate, we appreciate Mark Twain on the Board of Finance this evening. Thank you all very much. We'll move on to our follow-up discussion on January 4th. Board questions from our Super Saturday. I think you all have them in your packet. They are also online. I believe there are copies in the back. Okay, great. We can take them by RC. You have them written down, so we don't need to read through them all. But if there are follow-up based on that or additional questions within that RC, now is the time so that we can put the administration back to work.
May I just make one?
Sure.
Just a wee update, the Pension Board did meet tonight, and it did approve, bless you. It did approve the amount that we have in the budget as being accurate. So again, that was a process in a time, so that's moving forward. We are meeting with the consultant again, I believe, tomorrow, Richard, tomorrow? Yeah, so we were coming back again with the consultant for the health to see if there was any savings in terms of cohorts coming together, and we're hopeful that that will be the case, but that meeting will take place tomorrow. I do want to recognize my staff for assisting and putting this together. Thank you to the community members who ask questions. We really try to answer the questions for you. Maybe took a wee liberty here and there to join some things where it made sense to do that. But if there's things that are not here, this includes boards and the community members' questions. If there are things that are not here, just let us know, and we'll respond in kind for those. This is my first time through this process, which is answering the questions, so whatever way you would like to proceed.
No, I think let's take it RC by RC, and then at the end of that, if there are additional questions in your review that have come up, we can pose them and either get answers or send the administration back for our follow-up meeting.
So stick to these questions?
Well, let's start with these, and then if there are follow-up, we'll go back to those. So first, in RC 26, ELP, which began our day. Follow-up to any question that was asked, and then we'll take new questions on ELP. I just, it says if the board desires, we can include ELP class size standards. I actually would love to hear if that's the board desire. I think it's probably wise. We have class size guidelines at every other level, so we might as well have them written down somewhere.
And every year we keep forgetting what the number is, so this, you know, having it there will be helpful, I think.
So can I just get clear direction from the board? Is that something they'd like desired and add it in? Okay.
All right.
Yes. The answer's that.
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yes.
Is that, is that for this year, this year? Because we just want to make sure that we're on the same page as to what that class size is.
When we adopt this budget, I'd like to see it with the board's approval in the book, because the book then goes out to the other government agencies, so then they also know what numbers we're looking at. I think it's more useful to have that written down. If that then becomes, that's right now, an administrative regulation. If that, the board would desire to make that policy, we need to have that conversation, and we can do that, I think, easily within our discussions. Any other questions on ELP? I just would like to know, are we, our enrollment forecasts, we feel strongly that we're in good shape next year for ELP? With our current forecast?
Yes. As of today, I think we have 73 students that are currently enrolled. And we have, we are predicting, and we know of other students turning three in the springtime, so we'll be on our targeted number.
Any other ELP questions this evening? Okay, moving on to elementary. Questions on elementary?
I guess this is substitutes. I don't know if we're going to hold substitutes. So I was hoping Rich could just, you sent us that chart. So I was hoping you could just walk through that chart with us and what you think the basic result of that analysis is.
What are the tools?
Right click.
Who gave this man the mouse?
Rotate clockwise.
Rotate clockwise, right here. Bingo!
Does Suzie usually help?
Here, you want the mouse, get a mouse. There you go. I think that's the right way up. That is, we're good.
So we did break out substitutes by sick days and then personal days. We wanted to look at what are our potential exposure for substitutes. So not every individual who calls out sick necessarily needs a substitute. So an example, if a librarian calls out sick, we don't call a substitute. So pulling that information out, what's our potential exposure? So at the high school, assuming 180-day school day, you have about 21,000 potential sick days that you could have based on how many FTEs that are in the budget, 16,000 at the middle school, and so on. So the percentage taken does range as high of about 4.6%, a low of 3.49% for an average of about 4.05%. What's interesting to note is really, there's three schools that are above the average. So Darien High School, the middle school, and then Token Eek. If they were to come to the average, Darien High School would have about 119 less days taken than they had, than they currently have. At $100 a day for a substitute, that's about a $12,000 differential. The middle school's about 24 days to the average, and then Token Eek is 11 days to the average. We also broke out the personal and sick days. One of the things that stood out is, for the most part, with the exception of Royal, all the personal days are relatively within line. Royal does take, Royal employees seem to use more of their personal days compared to other employees elsewhere. However, their total absenteeism rate is actually relatively low. So about 65% of available personal days, so teachers, for example, currently have three personal days. On average, teachers use about 65% of those three personal days. So not every teacher's using those three maximum allowable days. The contract for next year does allow for a fourth personal day. So if you were to assume the same ratio of 65%, you could see an additional exposure of 242 days if you were to actually have that same level of absenteeism. We did keep the budget flat compared to the current year. If you were to look at the budget for last year, substitutes were under budget by about $21,000. So if you were to factor in that potential increased exposure for additional personal day, it nets you out to about where you are with a flat budget. So it's largely how we looked at it. One of the questions on the Saturday meeting, is there some seasonality to substitutes? So there is. You can see from the graph, there is quite a spike in May. So we do see a ramp up towards the end of the year. A little bit of a spike in November. It's primarily holiday-driven, I would imagine. You see that drop-off in December and January. It does pick up a little bit in the warmer months of March, but the spike really is towards the end of the fiscal year.
So Rich, that graph is basically showing the dollar amount, the dollar cost per month in each school. So, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
So last year, the board made some decisions to cut substitutes as a way of maybe sending a signal. Maybe a more appropriate way is to ask the administration to really sit down with their schools and share this kind of information, because it has a direct budgetary effect, which actually affects educational needs. Certainly, if people are sick, we don't want them in schools. Certainly, we understand people have a right to their personal days. But I think the graph, you know, even a quick glance, shows just some information that might be worth sharing. Because it, you know, at the, at the high school, as I said on the Super Saturday, that's almost a point on the budget on substitutes. So we encourage everyone to be healthy. It's interesting during the flu months that our teachers are showing up, and we appreciate that because our kids are home. But I think maybe just a chance to have a conversation along with a pictorial, because there's real dollars there. Mr. Deneen?
Marge, I would ask, do you, in a regular pull-up with the union representatives or the union leadership, this is really good data to go over with them. I think it plays into a lot of the conversations we had during contract negotiations. But I think having this data and having a visual, it's something we should do on a regular basis so that they can also reinforce to the members, while the administration is reinforcing to the staff, that this is, it's something that's being looked at, measured, and there's a concern.
So I do speak almost on a weekly basis with the union leadership, and they couldn't be more cooperative when they can agree with us that someone's abusing days. You know, the seasonality is the seasonality. It's not unique. But Jocelyn works with us, and will continue with Dr. Adley to share this information with them.
Thank you.
I saw there, Mrs. Stein. All right.
Thanks, Rich. That was great.
Thank you. We were on elementary RCs. I think I asked on Saturday, and I just wanted to follow up. We are still fairly formulaic at the elementary schools, and I know that makes sense in terms of parity and what we're trying to do. Do the schools feel that they've reviewed those formulas? They still feel the formulas are accurate and working for them? I just want to make sure we have regular review of formulas, and formulas don't exist just because they've always existed.
Yes, the allocation seems to, one of the questions I had right at the door, does this allocation work? It just seemed to be a natural question. So we did try, and, well, not that we tried. We actually ran the actual numbers with, so for instance, if they're buying books and so on and so forth, is the allocation for, some of the books are different prices, so on and so forth. We priced it out, given the number of kids, and it seemed as to serve very well.
Mrs. Stein?
Given what we heard from Mrs. Michelson on the Saturday and from our speaker tonight, can we update the enrollment to add those students at those schools and look at what happens next year in terms of sections, how those impact those sections that are on the bubble, given our current enrollment?
We can as long as it's consistent in terms of how we're incorporating that and had it been built in, had it not been built in already, and just making sure.
So what I wonder is now the time to do that or a subs? I worry about the consistency, too. Maybe we need a supplemental chart to understand current enrollment. But we certainly look at another chart when we actually set sections.
But that's not until... But that's not until, when do we get the next enrollment, Rich?
So I think it's going to be valuable around the budget control conversation. And so it might need to be a supplemental information there. I just don't want to change our enrollment numbers upfront, because every year we go October to October.
So I think another way to look at it might be that we usually use our October numbers to model, but there is some evidence, both anecdotal and in conversation, that we have had an influx of students. I've heard some people say it's because of the way that housing prices are down. So perhaps we could look at the number of students we've gotten and see if that's a normal rate of influx at this state, or if it's unusual. And if it's unusual, we may need to incorporate it.
Yeah, so I think I'd like to do, we've been doing a comparison to make sure we're just not overreacting.
I just worry, because Token Eek has some bubble sections for next year, very, within a student, and depending where these students fall, that can...
So why don't we look at it supplemental to budget control? Because that's really what we're looking. Do we have room in budget control at the moment?
I think we budget enough sections.
But we do need to remain consistent year to year in our model. Okay. Any other elementary questions? We can do it when we get to clubs and councils, too. I just wanted to, I'm assuming that the runs there are either new staff that have come in, or part of the stipended increase. There are consistent number of clubs and councils, as I've always been.
It's the same number as this current.
Okay. Music. Everyone good on RC thirteen? Okay. Art, there were no questions. Library, there are no questions. RC twenty-two, tech ed. We were given an additional chart.
Is it the graph?
Yeah, so the project lead-the-way materials, right? Is that where we were?
Nope, you're on music.
No, it's the actual graph.
Oh, tech ed, sorry. It's your tech ed. They combined all deferrals.
What's, the chart is...
Organizing, right there.
There we go.
Right there.
So fifteen. So the deferral is the kindergarten displays and tech ed.
Any questions on tech ed? Okay.
It was on technology.
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you.
We have to work on our rotation.
Pleasure.
What's happening? RC fifteen, technology.
So I just, I had followed up with Dr. Adley on the third and fourth grade Chromebooks. And I just dug a little deeper, and the peak enrollment in those two grades is seven hundred and thirteen during that five-year period. And we're ordering nine hundred and fifty Chromebooks, which is identical to the last cycle. And I calculate an excess of two hundred and thirty-three extra Chromebooks at a cost of seventy-five thousand. So I'm hoping that we can get a little more explanation. That seems like a lot of extra Chromebooks. Do they get broken often, and do the parents have some sort of liability if their kids are breaking a lot of Chromebooks?
Go ahead, you can go. Go ahead.
I did speak to Jeff Adams today. So we buy them in carts, so in carts of twenty-five. So in terms of third grade and fourth grade, there are thirty-two sections. We did include the potential sections that would tip that were listed in budget control, so only third grade, Ox Ridge fourth grade, and then Token Eek third grade. That would get you to about eight hundred and seventy-five Chromebooks. So there is an excess of seventy-five, which were considered spares. He wanted to consider spares, which is about eight percent of the total amount. So given that part of it is those potential classes that could tip, if you didn't want to have to necessarily have those spares, you could look at reducing potentially seventy-five at the cost of approximately three hundred and fifty dollars a Chromebook, that would be a little over twenty-four thousand dollars.
Mr. Stein.
What's the turnaround, ordering a Chromebook? If we were short, or we saw ourselves going short, is it something we can order within?
It's relative, I'm sure.
Yes. I have outreach to just understand the operating systems in the state. So I will, when I get any answer back to that, I will share it with the board. Anything on iPads? I know there was a lot on there. Mrs. McCann.
I do understand that there should be a full presentation on February eleventh, and I look forward to that. But I think it would be helpful to have at least a precis to understand some of the changes before we actually go into the ad-cut night. If Dr. McGarry could just at least talk to, she gave us some highlights, but...
Sorry, what are you looking for?
I just want to, it's our understanding that, I'd like to understand whether or not the administration believe it's true, believes it's true that the usage rate is as low as it is, as we are hearing anecdotally. And I'd like to understand what work is in process to make sure that the usage rate is as high as we can make it.
Any other questions in that vein, just so we can make sure it's prepped? Nope? Okay.
Ms. Hoffman, we did miss the project lead-the-way. Do you want me to go back to that?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, venom had to go. No, no, here it is, okay. So the project lead-the-way materials, they asked us to identify the cost at our Saturday meeting. The cost would be sixty-three thousand, a little bit over sixty-three thousand dollars. That includes professional development and the materials. The professional development's actually on the cheaper side. It's the materials that require a more significant cost.
So why don't we do this, rather than toggling back and forth? At the end of all our RC and questions, let's look at the deferral list.
Yes.
And then take the deferral list and best understand the priorities of it, or else we're all going to get whiplash. And we're going to lose Suzie in this. No other tech questions at this point? When are we looking at a full, new tech plan?
The technology plan will be shared, I believe, on February eleventh from Dr. McGedigan. They worked on it last year.
Yeah.
She took hold of it this year, has been working with the committee this year. So I think that it'll be pretty close to being wrapped up by the eleventh.
And it'll run the three-year span?
We're not required anymore to have a tech plan that runs three years, but I believe that that is the length of the plan. I imagine that they'll be reviewing that plan yearly in the way that technology needs to be reviewed. But yes, it's a three-year plan as it is right now.
Okay, so I think having something longer than annual will be helpful, even if what we're saying is it'll be up for review.
Of course.
But just so we have kind of a mapped-out plan going forward.
Yeah, I think it's important that we refer to that plan every year, so, yes.
RC three, middle school. Can, I have just a question on world language. You're continuing to study those programs. When do you think they'll come back to the board for, is that this year, is it next year?
I don't anticipate this school year that Christina would be coming back. You may remember from her presentation in October, she did talk about growing the program, in particular around Mandarin at the middle school, sign language at the high school. I don't anticipate we'll have any budget changes or another report this year, but likely early fall is what I would hope for.
Okay, so a report out early fall, okay. Any other questions on middlesex?
I think, just to clarify, there was a question about psychologists and where they are. I think last budget season, we had a lot of robust conversation about where to put a psychologist. Why were we doing it? Part of that was tracking to see the right place. But at this time, we decided to put one in general education and one in special education. Is there any recommendation from the administration to do that differently, or to currently hold that as they are budgeted?
We want it to continue the way we have it disaggregated currently, which is on the elementary level. We have it in general education and special education. And in the secondary level, it's attributed to special education.
Mrs. McCann.
I think also an important thing to remember is that several years ago, we changed the name of the department from special education to special education and student services with the idea that that department truly does encompass not just children with IEPs, but other children as well. And that's why the department is so named.
Yes, we shorthand it often, but Mrs. McCann is right. It is special education and student services. Any other middlesex questions? Okay, the high school. Any questions?
Can you explain the explanation for removing achievers? I didn't quite understand. It would be a point-two FTE savings. What do you mean? You already counted for... I didn't quite understand. Can you explain?
So the point-two represents a little over fifteen thousand dollars. We do book staff turnover credit in RCA eighteen. So we're assuming twenty-four teachers or twenty-four potential FTEs turning over from year to year. So really, if that point-two were to be reduced, you could potentially credit that against your staff turnover credit. So instead of looking at twenty-four teachers, you're at twenty-three point eight teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, that works.
No, I got it.
I just wanted to follow up. We did hear a fair amount of public comment, and the administration, I'm sure, doesn't have a recommendation at this point, but I wanted to follow up. We heard a fair amount of public comment about the theory of our athletics, where we pay for registrations into competitions and clubs and councils, where we're asking parents to pay. Can, at our next meeting, just come back with a recommendation on where we should be with that? And get the board's thoughts, thinkers thinking on that. Mrs. McCann.
I think it is a very important point. This is not a budget where I'd be inclined to make any sort of change, but it is a discussion I'd be inclined to put on the master agenda for some time in the upcoming year.
I would agree with that.
Any other questions on Darien High School? RC two, Fitch. Nothing? Okay. RC twelve, facilities. Nothing.
It goes for a little bit.
RC twenty-five, fixed expenses. Certainly, we've heard that transportation will remain a question. Thank you for the split. On the fuel, oil, and the natural gas. Any other questions on the fixed expenses?
Tara?
Yeah, Mr. Dean.
Just ask some of the public comment. Rich, if you could do one of your great slides that simplifies layman's terms, kind of the contract in terms of what a bus costs, and that, you know, having a bus finish a run and then do another one is, well, it would be nice to be that easy. It's not...
Sure.
Just kind of a layman's overview of how that works. I think that would help provide more information to the overall conversation. Just a quick question on the fuel. When does that contract get unlocked and relocked again? What's the timing of that?
For heating oil? We have one more school year.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Just the fuel cost, that includes the cost related to the buses, is that correct?
So the fuel shown is just heating oil to heat the buildings. There is another locked-in rate with diesel fuel. That's reflected in regular transportation under RC twenty-five.
So it's within that transportation line?
It is within that transportation line.
Okay, thanks.
And that's the fuel?
That's the, correct.
Capital projects. Questions? Very quiet bunch tonight. Mrs. McCann.
The one thing I think that we're talking about, we don't have a ballpark for, but we need to be at least thinking about in our larger conversation, is we also have a proposal out to the architects to replace the portables. So when we're talking about capital projects, I just want to make sure that we're incorporating the idea of this other project we have out in the ether. Again, I know we don't have pricing on it, but as we look at that trajectory, I think knowing that that project's coming is important as well.
Mrs. Ritchie.
I'm sorry, can I go back to fixed expenses?
Yeah.
Rich, is there any way to break out the fuel cost that's contained within the bus?
We can give the number.
Could you do that? That would be great. Thank you.
Scroll down. Mr. Graham.
Just on the fuel cost, pardon me, slightly tangential. Are we locked in, or are we done where we are in terms of the oil-gas conversion? Or are we going to swap over more schools over time?
I might defer to Mike.
Again, slightly tangential. I'm just trying to get this going.
We're locked in with the gas rate because of the fact that there was a capital outlay by Everchors to run the lines for us.
Are they going to pipe in any more schools, or is that done? We have everything ready to get?
We're currently, the Ox Ridge Building Committee is looking to pipe in Ox Ridge. And it's going to go by Royal. So we're going to pipe in Royal. Royal does already have dual-fuel burners, so...
Okay, so this will change over time between oil and gas?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next couple of years.
Curriculum. Mrs. Ritchie.
I have some, well, my first comment is going back to the math program. During our discussion, I think Jack got up and asked if there was any way to amortize that cost over the life of the contract. So I was wondering if that is a possibility. And then my other question was, if the program is terminated prior to the end of that six years, what are the terms of the contract? And then I think Suzie may have alluded to the fact that we may not use that particular program for the full six years. So does it make sense to shorten the duration? Does that make fiscal, educational sense?
So in terms of cost, if we went, let's say, from six years to four years, we would save about ten thousand dollars. That's, we have not finalized the cost of the professional learning that's associated with the program yet, but generally speaking, with the textbooks and the digital resource, four years, we would save, I'm sorry, we would save nine thousand dollars for four years, and we'd save about ten thousand dollars if we went to three years. So let's just say if the cost without professional learning was a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, that's what you would save. So it's not a significant amount when you think about the number of students. And we really access the digital resource more than the traditional textbook, because that's what we can personalize for students. Your first question, I'll actually turn that over to Rich to see whether or not...
It was just an interesting suggestion. I don't know if that's possible, but...
So boards of ed can't carry funds over from year to year. The state does have what's called a non-lapsing account, where boards of ed have the ability to carry over one percent of unexpended funds, only if the fiscal authority of a community, so in this case, the Board of Finance, approve it. In terms of carrying a liability on our balance sheet, really, you can only for a board of ed do it for one year and then move that liability as an expense on your second year. The town, however, can. So if that was an option, what would end up having to happen? The town would have to make that hundred and sixty thousand dollar cash outlay in year one. They'd carry it as a prepaid expense on their balance sheet, and then they would have to essentially debit the board of ed one-sixth of it a year for six years. It's essentially a funded appropriation then for six years, a year locked into every year for six years. That would have to be really the determination of the town, whether or not they would want to carry a liability or a prepaid expense for the board of ed for six years. It essentially becomes almost like an intercompany transfer that you would see.
And the second question that you asked is really about the fine print, and whether or not, if we canceled early, if we would end up getting any of that money back. And I don't know what the fine print says, but my guess is no, because we would be paying for it all of this year, committing to the six years. And so given that we've committed for the six years, we would be. The reason that, as I said to you at that meeting, is normally I would not recommend any program, regardless of the program, for that amount of time. But knowing the difference in price, I would suspect that our middle school would, minimum, maintain the program for three years. They've committed to the research, the study, and therefore I think they're confident that this is the right program for us. After those three years, it does give us an opportunity to study another program for a year, a year and a half, before we move on to purchase another one if we needed to. And so why, that's... And so why, that's why I think that, given the cost difference, it makes the most sense to go with six years for three grade levels and that amount of students versus three to save nine thousand dollars. Just one addition, there is a memo that's in the back of the room and you also have at your table this evening. It is the memo that was requested by Ms. Achman regarding our L population. So it's a lengthy memo, which obviously you didn't have the opportunity to read. But given that it's five pages with a lot of live links, the public will have an opportunity to read as well. But quickly, what you can see at first glance is the population and how it's changed over the course of the past five years. And so in 2015, we, on the second page, you notice that we had eleven children that we were serving that were Ls. And now we are serving sixty-six students. You'll also see on the front page, both Mr. Maroney and I were looking up some of the languages just before the start of the board meeting and where they, countries they come from. But we have sixty-six children that speak twenty-five different languages in Darian. So we're pretty lucky to have that diversity come our way and the many perspectives that have come with that diversity. And the work that our teachers have had to learn to work with populations of L students, I think has strengthened our capacity in lots of different ways. There's some links here that I think may be helpful to help you understand the federal guide or federal guidelines, federal regulations and the state guidelines. And it gives you a little bit of a sense of how things have evolved with supporting our Ls.
So, talk to me how this is going to work staffing-wise. We have an increased population and yet we're pulling back a little bit.
So later you'll see that on the referral list, the L teacher, in terms of our priorities, was listed as number one. When I requested the L teachers, because I believe that we obviously need it. We have made as many, what's challenging, I guess, when I say we need it, is that we do have a bit of an ebb and flow in our model because we are, we serve, our reading teachers are primarily those that service our L students. They receive professional development from our certified ESL teacher that also serves L students. But their caseloads ebb and flow. So as students enter SRBI or exit SRBI, they can have more students at one particular time or less students. We can have a particular school that may have more students at some time and then less, and that varies. There isn't one particular school that has significantly more students in SRBI than another. Having said that, we've had to make some shifts in our schedule and it's not always ideal, but we've made it work. If we have a significant amount of L students come next year, it may be a time where we're asking the superintendent for additional support, whether that's through another alternative or looking at a mid-year decision. But at this point, we are seeing the change and I think we're going to continue to see that change. I don't see the decrease in students. In fact, I would say that we're seeing an increase. We received two or three more students just over the holiday break.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Just following up on that ELL teacher, is that for one school? Is it, would it be a teacher that floats around the different schools?
So I would say that we have the, obviously you can see from our chart, we have the most students right now at the elementary level. And so we would have to consider what our model looks like. So we have three levels and each of our levels run on different schedules. So we have a six-day schedule, a five-day schedule and an eight-day schedule, which is challenging sometimes to share staff among levels. So it's likely that we would prioritize the person that we currently have. And you'll read in the memo, she does all of the fall assessment. She does all the coordinating and she provides direct service to our high school students. She is also now servicing some of our L students and it's, we've just had to make do and be creative when we've had her come down to support that population of children. We would likely have to restructure maybe a secondary person and then an elementary person. But it still may require that we bring the secondary person to help out because the numbers just may indicate the need.
I mean, so I think our schools certainly are stronger by this diversity, right? And so I just want to make sure that we're able to support this. I think it benefits all children. And so you feel comfortable at sixty-six students that you've staffed it correctly or appropriately.
Well, it'll, it's very, very likely to come back again next year. I mean, it's not ideal, it's not perfect what we're doing. And I recognize that. It's not, it's not what was advocated for in the form. There were some forced choices here and decisions that had to be made to get us to where we are. And that's why it remains as the top priority. If it doesn't somehow get into this budget, it would more likely come back again in the next budget.
Okay. Any other questions on curriculum?
Yeah, actually.
Mrs. McCammon?
It's not ideal, I recognize. We don't typically want to pay for staff with grants. But are there opportunities to apply for grants specifically in this area, given the increase in population?
We actually currently pay for one teacher, our L teacher, out of our grant. And so if anything, I would have a concern that as our grants continue to be reduced, because our Title I grant is the one that is providing the support for this individual, is that as our grant funding continues to be reduced, that we make some shifts or some considerations of how we're going to continue to pay for these folks because this individual may end up back in our general budget. And that's always a challenge when you put human capital inside of a grant budget. Is that grants don't last forever or they can be reduced? And so, no, I don't think that there's other grants that we could apply for more than we already receive. And I would also say that we should be considering what happens when our money continues to be reduced.
And our translation services, are in there, right? We discussed in Title I currently?
No, our translation services, if you look at our general education budget, we have twenty-four thousand dollars there. And that's for material, materials and resources. Right now, that's where we pay for some of that translation services.
So Title I actually has that member and that's all of this money?
And provides, that Title I grant also provides support for our professional learning as well.
Any other questions? Donna, Mr. Maroney?
So a question on the ELL, English language teacher is, is, I don't know how to correctly say this, but in, by putting it off, are we potentially incurring more costs in the future by not having students up to speed in English and having difficulty? And will they need more services for a longer period of time as opposed to having a shorter period for one, for having an English language teacher now?
No. And the reason I say that is because if we were not giving children the support for our Ls right now, we would have been back during the season asking for support. So we never neglect our responsibility in giving children what they need. And on the other side of it, giving our teachers what they need in terms of capacity to support our children. What I would say, though, is that the schedule is getting tight. And it, right now, we can navigate what we have. If our numbers continue to increase and if our numbers on the SRBI level continue to increase, it will be very hard to continue to be creative. And so what I would ask this board to consider is, in the future, how we will navigate the supports that we do offer our children with this population that's increasing. But I would say that right now, we are not being neglectful in any way where a student's skills are not where they need to be in order to be successful later.
And I didn't mean to say we're being neglectful.
No, no, no.
My point is just, are we giving them the full treatment that they can get? Or are they getting the minimal treatment?
And that's a tricky question because the, it's, truthfully, students, there's only so many hours in a day. And so we want our students to be in the classroom. We want them to have the support that they need if they are being pulled out. But they're getting what they need while not missing their core academics as well. We provide them with resources, whether that's an iPad, even at the elementary level, if they need translation or apps that could be helpful to them. But I do believe now they're, they're getting what they need. The other piece of it, which you'll see in the memos, you know, students come in at different levels. So that's the other part. They could, I can be an L that requires more support than you. And so that will also be a determining factor of how much support a particular student might need.
How are you able to model or can you not? It's just on any given year, because I imagine looking at the diversity of support that we need, given just the diversity of languages you have listed here. Is there any good way to model as you go into the future? Or no, it really is as your registrations come in or as a student enters the district?
I'm sorry, clarify model.
Because your, your, your population jump is eleven, eighteen, twenty-six, fifty-five, sixty-six. Is there, is there any good educational predictor or no?
No.
I was hoping there was something I just didn't know about that would help me.
Right.
It's just, okay.
Could a look at this population be added to Malone and McBroom's work? Dr. Adley?
Oh, sure.
Could a look at this population be added to Malone and McBroom's work? Are there any?
I'm not sure if they take into consideration the diversity of the population, but I can certainly inquire.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on curriculum? Okay, we'll move on to summer school. Oh, nope. Go back, go back, go back. Julie, I think you had asked about trends in enrollment. Is that helpful to what you were looking for?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any, yeah, go ahead.
Can you talk through that second line item to make sure that we understand exactly what that thirty thousand means, please?
So students who have IEPs are recommended for extended school year programs. And if there's a program that we recommend at the PPT, we provide support for that program.
So what that thirty thousand breaks down into is enrollment in Darian summer school classes?
DSS classes, yes.
So there is additional money spent on summer school for children with disabilities, but this is enrollment in DSS?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to RC twenty-four, Special Education Student Services. I should get back in the practice. Any questions?
New questions later.
I have new questions.
I have new questions later too. Let's take these questions. I have some new questions later. Any, follow-up on these? Okay, RC seventeen, help, nothing. RC eleven, PE athletics. Let's handle these questions before any new questions. Anyone?
Okay, just to clarify on the pass down. So I am still concerned about the JV team now getting, the uniforms aren't in great condition to begin with. We are now adding another year to the life of those uniforms to be passed down to JV to use for three years. I, I'm just, I'm still not comfortable with it. I'm just going to voice my opinion.
Any other questions? Mrs. Ritchie, was that a hand before I got?
It's not on this, so we're still.
No, no, we'll go to new. I just, I have a question, what you mean with require cuts in athletic programming or other programs within the budget. Are you talking about cutting teams? Are you talking about?
So I deliberately, I, I.
Maybe I'm asking two in the weeds. Let me ask it more general. Is this the only cut that you found that was appropriate in the athletic RC at this time?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I guess if you, if you were to cut out the twenty thousand dollars or so that we have put in for the additional coaches, that would be about it. Otherwise, honestly, I don't want to be inflammatory by putting out significant cuts. We brought this forward, you know, thinking that this is what the, what the budget can tolerate in terms of reduction. If there's any other reductions to be made in athletics, you can tell me if you want to get people inflamed in terms of which programs those are because that's what's going to happen. And I've tried not to do that at this point. And I respect the board pushing on, on other programs outside athletics or otherwise, that's fine. But I have deliberately, whether it's achievers or whether it's freshman girls soccer, whatever happens to be, right? I've tried to avoid that. So in avoiding it, I guess you could say, well, don't add in the twenty thousand dollars for the additional support coaches. Honestly, for the sake of twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars and four, four, four coaches, that's serving a lot of kids, in my opinion. But, but that's the thing that I would put out there.
Mrs. McCammon?
Can you expand on that last, for the coaches? Just from your point of view, what happened? Was there a review? Did you order or did, was a review of the program suggested and you took a look at? What drove that recommendation of four?
I think it was a discussion about cuts, honestly, in terms of which programs cut, which didn't, to try and bring a wee bit of consistency to that. I'm not going to swear there's a hundred percent consistency to it, okay? But at least I think it's a nicer balance. I don't want to touch intermurals where kids who are, right, who are not involved in athletics perhaps and stuff, I think that's off the table, to be honest with you. But it was spared by that sort of discussion. For twenty thousand dollars, it seems a reasonable investment to engage a lot of kids and to sort of begin to create some consistency, bless you, around that sort of cut, no-cut policy.
So is the theory then of the administration that freshman sports are no cut and every other level is up to the coach?
Well, I would, and honestly, I would need to go back and just double check with the athletic director exactly which of those, we brought alignment to it, but I'm not going to speak to each one separately without talking to him.
But I think that's what we need to hear. I think what I'm missing is, what's the consistency?
It's a little all over the map. I don't think personally that the additional coaches were justified the way I would like to see them justified because that spreadsheet, the numbers are all over the place. And I think I would rather the athletic director present a more detailed conversation as to why those coaches are needed from a safety standpoint, from a kids' engagement standpoint. I just, it just, if you think about the justification Rich made for an accountant on his team, it was pretty black and white, but the athletic justification, in my mind, is just not there.
I would agree. I just, I was hoping for a little more explanation, what drove the need for the new coaches? Was it more participants? Was it safety? So I think those details would be important to our deliberations to understanding what was driving the additions.
More participants and safety sort of go together to some degree, right? So, to some degree, so, but I'll get clarity for you. But the idea was around to try and bring consistency around equity, around which sports were cut and which ones weren't cut, basically. But we can.
Okay.
So that brings it. So does that mean those sports are going?
So you'll get back to us on the consistency is. Mrs. McCammon?
Related to that, could we please have an updated version of that sheet so we can see? Did we get one?
Yeah. Yeah, we did. It should be there.
Richard, do you have another copy?
It was included in the back. That was on your.
Oh, it's here.
On the table, yeah.
So this, this spreadsheet, just to clarify for everyone, this has the new coach number built into it.
Yeah.
So for football?
For all.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking adjustment for the football.
This has the addition of those coaches built into it.
Okay. But is there an adjustment for the change of head football coach position?
Explain what you mean, the new.
So there'll be a new head football coach, so was.
Adjustment for salary and stuff?
Right.
I don't have mine in front of me right there.
And it probably would not be significant, given that football coaches are in like a certain category. It's not, it wouldn't be a significant, probably, financial change.
I just want to know.
Yeah, not, not at this point.
There's this weird category classification presentation here.
But they do get increases.
Yeah. Mrs. McCam?
One more time. The stipends, I've seen the range in the back of the contracts, but that's a yearly stipend that then is divided out depending on how many seasons you serve. There's a range of stipends, it's four and change to eight and change, but you know, the dollars don't necessarily equal that number.
Can you try the question one more time just to work there?
What he's wanting to look at is unified sports.
What he's wanting to look at is unified sports.
Unified sports.
Where it shows up, because there's only one coach.
Yep.
So you have to look at what level unified sports falls into in the, in the grids? And then you have to look at how many years within that particular grid? Like football coaches always start on a higher grid. I don't know where uniforms by off the top, but like soccer's in a different grid. Volleyball's in a different grid.
Right.
Yeah, there's just the grids.
You won't find a direct, like a divisor that will answer that question for you.
So it is by season?
By season. Thank you.
So I think we end up spending so much time here, to be honest, and for the public who has sat with us for all these years on this, because it is a really valued program. It's a really, so many kids are able to participate in it, but it's also a large dollar amount. And so, you know, there are concerns, I will say. You know, anecdotally, I was at the wrestling thing. That mat is taped down. We heard it was fifteen years old. There's one that's fifteen. I hear there's one that's much older. And so I think when we're presented with kind of these smaller choices, we're looking to understand how the choice was made. And maybe that's Duke's point. How did we get here? Right? Like, are we, are we making the right decisions? Is there equity between programs? And this ends up going on and on. So maybe just a better explanation of the process. I think Mrs. McCannan was hitting on us too. The process by which these were the choices that were made. Because, you know, everyone's got their, their passion around something. So that might just be helpful to the why. What did I look like? You know, what equipment did I look at? And I came to this decision because I did a holistic look and this is the equipment that I could do this to. I think a little more explanation might make the board a little more comfortable with how we got to this decision.
And can I qualify that on uniforms in terms of getting more information? If uniforms are being passed down to the JV and freshman level that are not in good condition, they have rips, they have tears, do we recondition them like we do equipment? Meaning, are we, you know, I just don't want to sit here and have parents come back to us saying, the elastic on my basketball pants, my kid is running down the court and his pants are pulling down. We've heard it. I don't want to be there again. So I would feel more comfortable going ahead with this if I knew that uniforms were going to be looked at and that if they are in really bad condition, we're doing something about them and that we're not going to put athletes in uniforms that just don't work, for whatever reason. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I would also anticipate we're not going to put athletes in uniforms.
But you weren't here for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
And we've heard it multiple times. And I don't want to be there again.
So we heard that, we heard shorts falling down. We heard safety helmets taped. And it was for several years. It was extensive and uncomfortable and not okay. So I think, you know, nobody wants to talk about uniforms anymore, honestly. But we want to make sure the right management controls are in place, including reviewing refurbishment. So that whatever schedule is appropriate, that's really on you guys. But we want to make sure that our kids are outfitted appropriately.
I think I hear you, yep.
Okay. Any other questions on this one? All right, new questions.
We need to finish going through them.
Oh, sorry. I thought, felt like the end of the day was athletics. RC eighteen personnel. I think we've all gone through that. Does anyone need to look at that again? Administration. We also received that attachment in finance.
Did I ask on finance?
Sure.
Sixty thousand for the software and the consultant. Does that conclude the implementation of that, in the integration?
For OpenGov, sorry. RC twenty...
The rollout, getting integrated with the rest of the town?
I think it purchases the software and the consultant to help us do that.
So it's an estimate? We, I do have a meeting with an OpenGov representative in next week, towards the end of next week. So we'll find out more information, but it's a, it's a rough estimate for that.
Where did you get it? Where did you get the estimate?
Just in speaking terms with a representative from OpenGov.
It was not, it's not like unusual. I was discussing this board meeting, at the last meeting, that to consider the time to consider this expenditure. I know it's all one big pot, but another sixty thousand on top of what we're looking at here is, well, it's pretty significant, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess my point is I want to make sure that we get input from the Board of Finance on that, because it's been directly requested from them.
Yeah, I, I think that's where we, we're aware they've directly requested it and we take that like all committee requests and then we put out what we think we can do most, best for the district. Mr. Burke?
So just recall for me that in terms of opening a line for that, where in the process do we hear from the administration as to whether or not that's something that they want or benefits them in their, their jobs? I mean, there's opening the line for that expense, but I think I need to hear ultimately from the administration that it's something that is desirable for them, it's workable, you know, for them.
Yes, I think that's part of this whole discussion. Is this something that the administration needs and the board needs to have a discussion? Is this something that the board feels is important? I'm with you on that. All right, new budget questions.
Mrs. Stein, RC twenty-four. Can you, in looking at it, and I forgot to ask this question that Saturday, I apologize, contracted speech. This is my question. When we look at our actual last year, it was seven eighty-six, three eighty-six. Our budget for this year is five twenty-one, six sixty-four. Can you just look, I know the year-to-date in November was one sixty-five. Can you just confirm we're on track to be in the, you know, five twenty-one range? Or is that not realistic?
So the answer's no. So in the Finance Committee that we'll have in January, we are going to make a recommended transfer into contracted speech for approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars.
Okay.
When we look at the budget and talking with Shirley and some of her contracted line items, the increase in speech was about fifty-eight thousand dollars. There was an increase in contracted OT for about fifty-one. That fifty-one really should be reflected in contracted speech, which would leave contracted OT roughly flat budget to budget. So for contracted OT this year, we are running pretty much to budget. But contracted speech, we do, we are going to recommend and bring forward at the June, or the January Finance Committee, a transfer for speech.
So then I would say, is our five seventy-nine, six sixty-four an accurate forecast? A number to be, should we?
We would recommend increasing it by that fifty-one thousand that you see as the increase in OT, contracted OT, and taking away that increase in contracted OT.
Is that still enough?
So the aggregate stays the same, but the shift between...
You're just going to move it up to contracted speech?
Does that...
So we're two fifty over and we're moving fifty up. I think that's my question.
So I feel like that's not enough.
Where's the other two hundred thousand dollars get made up from?
Do we need more?
So the number we're projecting for twenty twenty-one, looking at students that are aging out, looking at switch of services and personnel inside, is why we came up with that number.
Okay.
So Rich, the year-to-date, the eleven thirty nineteen, we're going to recommend a transfer in of about a hundred thousand. Is that, I imagine that there's sometimes a lag, right? By the time we receive the services, there's an actual invoice by the time we pay it. So how far are we lagging? Do you mean, so in April, when we look at this, and we're like, oh, are we then expecting a lag? And so we're going to be over and we're looking at more? I'm worried that we don't have enough, is the answer.
What we ask Special Ed, the Special Ed Office to do is to encumber the contract for the year. So even though you might not have an expenditure that'll hit in January, what we want to do is earmark that money and encumber that money to carry you forward to the whole year. Now, there's a possibility that maybe student needs change from January to April or to May, and that could go up, or it could even go down. Maybe a student leaves the district and it goes down. It could be that maybe more speech is needed. But that hundred and twelve thousand dollars isn't for bills that we have to pay immediately. It's the estimate based on the contracts that Shirley has to carry us through the end of January.
Okay. So...
So we're going to see a change to this RC budget?
There'll be a recommended administrative change next meeting of a fifty thousand dollar adjustment from one line to the other. Mr. Janine?
So I guess in line with that, though, and to the point of John Zagratzky's comments, I mean, you can only forecast so much in terms of who's aging out, who's coming in from enrollment statistics. And then you've got, to the point of our earlier conversation, fourteen kids coming in maybe over the holidays. Some of those kids may be identified. So this is just kind of a moving target as to what additional funds we may need over the course of the year. But I think that's where we have to start thinking about, what is that balance? What is that extra that we need? So that we're not moving these big sums of money around, but projecting like, hey, we just, we know we need an extra hundred thousand and they are based on the trend of who comes in during the year, who gets identified during the year and stuff like that. So, does that make sense?
Yes.
Thanks.
In terms of the servicing around contracted speech, because I know we've looked at employees versus contract and sometimes contract gives us more flexibility, right? Different levels, different needs. Are we still comfortable having this much contracted rather than having actual staff?
We priced that out, and it actually is cheaper to do it this way. At least currently, with the current level of services.
Okay. If I may just add one thing to that also, Dr. Adley. In light of what Mr. Janine was saying also, you know, we had this year five new students move into the district that required intensive speech and language services. There's no way to anticipate that. So we're able to contract services based on student need and there wouldn't have been a way to predict that.
That's where we see our transfers.
Thanks.
Mrs. McCannan?
Well, just to be clear, there is no buffer in this, in these services. I just want to be clear that we don't buff, we don't plan a buffer. Maybe we should, but I'm just saying that there's not. So just for...
But we're saying, like, if you need more, we can do that now.
Oh, yeah, if we need it, yeah.
Mrs. McCannan?
No, I get that. Might not have been the right word, but I get that.
Well, I think contingency planning. What does contingency planning look like for special education? And is there any science behind it? But, but the question I'd like to ask, and thank you for raising the point. The question I'd like to ask is not so much in the spirit of adding and cutting, but more in the spirit of having the right level of educated conversation. And I think part of the impetus of some of the questions around where psychologists sit or five oh fours is I do think that it would be nice to have some more budgetary transparency around what's happening in special education. And I could see that in a couple of ways. I'd like to understand what enrollment looks like from a, from a, the impact of enrollment on cost. Specifically, what are the trends in five oh four from a, from a, the cost to serve that population? What, what about for specific IEP students? Are we having an increase in the number of students with IEPs? Another factor I think would be, we talked about an increase in identification rates. What does that look like in terms of cost? Now, again, I think you'd be, you're having to approximate, but to give us a sense of what we're looking at. The other thing I'd like to understand is, are there any populations where we can now serve them at a, at a more efficient cost rate? Or there are populations that are now more expensive to service? We're not going to change that we're servicing them. But I think just in terms of being able to talk in an educated way about special education costs and what's driving them, it would be helpful to understand sort of what the numbers are within the program and how they're moving around, so that we can all speak to it in a comment. Mr. Brown? Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. McCannan, are you done?
I think that maybe the other one that I would add to that is investment. And we are investing in this program, and I think for a reason. And what does that look like over time? So anyway, that's that. Thank you.
No, I was just going to piggyback on that with the trend, pardon me. With the thought on trends, we had the question earlier for MMS and Darian High School for the five oh four. It was really non-responsive to the trend question. So we'd love to see some data as to how things are progressing.
And you mean, by that, you mean the, the number of, from an enrollment perspective?
Yeah, they said we're currently staff sufficiently, that's great. But we were really looking for trends. And I think the question actually asked it that way. So any information you are able to provide would be very helpful.
Does my, just to be clear, does my staff understand that question? Just to be clear, honestly, I don't want to walk away from the table, that being clear.
So again, just for the trend question, though, we had in RC three for the middle school and RC one for Darian High School. Question was posed, is there an increase in five oh four students with mental health needs? And says current staffing adequately supports mental health needs. Well, that doesn't tell me what the trend is.
Okay, all right, okay. Got it, thank you.
Mrs. McCannan? The other area, and we heard about this earlier, where I think it would be helpful to understand excess cost a little bit better. When you hear that excess cost reimbursement is down, I think the logical assumption is therefore our costs are down. So can you help us understand with more detail on why our costs are not down? Now, I understand that there are several students aging out, but I think from a programmatic perspective, it would be helpful to understand what that number really looks like and what's behind it. Thank you.
So I think Rich may be refreshing your report on kids not hitting the threshold but still within district and kind of any trends you see on excess cost.
In that chart, I don't, I don't think we've gotten it this year with the excess cost calculation and then the historical data that Mike used to do, Mike Finkney used to do.
I think he did it last year. It just gave a historical trend of where we were over the last, I think it actually went back five years at one point.
And then the assumption on what the percentage...
What was our assumption and what was our actual reimbursement?
Right, our assumption for, it might be actually...
I can share with you. I have last year's.
I have it too.
We can remodel. Any other questions on special ed? You know, there was the question tonight, and I think it bodes, I assume if there was a student who was... Maybe I should ask it this way. It is possible there's a student who couldn't reach school because of a need, anxiety, depression, or any other health impairment that would go into special education transportation, possibly. Do we feel like our transportation is solid on this number as well for our special education population that needs access to school?
Yes, based on the current enrollment and where we are as our December count, we do know that we eliminated one bus for next year based on our current trends. Again, if something were to change with a student or a school was to change for a student or transportation, we would need to come back to the board.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Janine?
Rich, are those Suburbans predominantly used for special ed transportation or just transportation in general?
It's really just special ed, education transportation.
Is there, I know you're new, you're trying to figure this all out. You made an investment in those two Suburbans. There'll probably be a point in time where they have to be replaced. But is there something you can look at that doing it that way saves us money? Purchasing a couple of more Suburbans versus adding it on to the bus contract?
So we did look at it. The break even is about three hundred and fifty dollars a day. So in terms of our out of district, where we're sending a student maybe to a private school, there weren't that many opportunities in district. It would depend on the type of vehicle that you were going to get. So that might actually increase that break even of three fifty. As opposed to the Suburban, it might have to be an actual like lift van, like a wheelchair lift van.
Okay, other board questions on other RCs? You all said you had some before. Went athletics, someone said weight, and someone told me that there we had one I thought on curriculum. No?
Oh, we need to go over the list of deferrals.
Yeah, we will. I just want to...
I have two questions or I guess comments. The first, they're both to Rich. The first is the transfers that we've done so far, are they informing your budgeting as you look at the next fiscal year? So if there are changes that are permanent and need to be adjusted, are you, are you taking that into account?
So we are. So one of the transfers we had in the beginning of the year was for sewer costs. That was about twelve thousand dollars. That's what I did in RC twenty-five for fiscal twenty-one. Another one, actually going the other way, was the transfer, and Mr. Janine mentioned it earlier. We had a transfer for personal property taxes on the top here. We had a transfer for personal property taxes on the top here, so you actually see the credit, because we're not budgeting that for next year. As the town did indicate that they would take that off the assessment rules. We did have a transfer that was approved for consulting services within summer school. And so when that was paid, we did indicate you'd see a reduction in summer school supplies with the increase in consulting services. That is reflected in the budget. And then, as I mentioned, one of the things that we'll have in the January report is that contracted speech. And so when we adjust those lines, you'd see that as well.
The Board of Finance mentioned long-term subs. So, and long-term subs is a conversation at this board table every single year. So can you talk a little bit to that? I mean, I think part of Mr. Zagratsky's comments is we often, they often see transfers into that. And so can you talk a little bit about the unpredictability of that? Because I think we're going to have to be well-versed in it to be able to answer some of their questions.
So typically, if you have long-term subs, you have two scenarios that could play out. One is you have a long-term sub for an individual who's out, who's no longer being paid. In that case, you accrue salary savings in whatever RC that, let's say that teacher is at. And typically, you would make a transfer from the salary account, let's say at the high school, if that's where it was located, into the long-term sub account into RC 18 for personnel. Then there's also long-term subs where you're paying the individual teacher who's out and has a sick time. But then you're also paying the long-term sub who's covering for that individual. So you're essentially carrying those, both those expenditures at the same time. So when that happens, you do have that budget for $475,000. Depending on how many of those instances you have, you would have to look to make transfers to cover those additional costs. That can come typically from salary savings, whether it's for any teacher who's out or any secretarial staff is out. Typically, in a scenario like that, you'd want to look at salary savings anywhere within your matrix of employees. If that doesn't exist, and depending on how bad your long-term subs are, you might look at other areas where you have, you know, savings that are hitting essentially your fund balance. So you're not either cutting programs or taking things away, so you look for those pockets areas. But it really depends if it's a long-term sub who's covering for an individual who's not getting paid. And that typically is maybe like a maternity leave. Or is it a long-term sub, perhaps, where somebody is actually getting paid sick time at the same time as the long-term sub?
But it's accurate that sometimes when you see the transfer out of, say, the Ox Ridge RC, it's, it's often salary savings. It's, it's not a built-in, you, you have an offset. And so what you're really doing is transferring your salary savings to your actual expense.
So it's really what would be classified as an adjustment account.
Right, and I want to clarify that, because if you're moving within salaries, it's not a transfer. So that, most of what it's going on...
You're right, we've been calling it.
Right, it's not a transfer. And I think we need to be careful about referring to them as transfers, because they're not. They're account reconciliations. And the board actually doesn't even have authority over those.
So if you were to, let's say, not have those salary savings and had to take money from health insurance, for example, that would be a transfer as I would cross-bro.
That's a board-approved transfer, yeah.
Right, right, I think we just have to be careful with that. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dineen.
Teri, I just, I throw it out in the, the overall conversation as you go through your account update. Since it continues to be a topic of conversation, security. And as we go into the planning for Ox Ridge and bring on a security consultant and look at that, we may look at different types of security we might want to look at. Is it time to break out security as a separate RC in terms of what we're investing in it and what that looks like? I just think it's maybe a topic of conversation.
Well, it certainly can be diluted, that's for sure. And pulled out, it certainly can be pulled out.
I think there's, I think there's a need for people to see clearly the investment in security. There's so much we want to let them know about, there's so much we don't want to make public. It's a balancing act. But I think as we talk about changes in security at the high school, we talk about implementing latest and greatest security at Ox Ridge, which may lead to additional security investments at the other schools. We may want to be able to specifically look at security investment.
We should probably then, as a board, at some point, have that conversation. Is it a separate RC? Is it aligned within RCs that we can look at equity and parity throughout schools? But a model for that is probably due at this point. Any other board questions on the budget? Mrs. Ritchie.
Just RC 20 finance. There's, there's a pretty substantial increase. And I think, I don't know when it can come, but I would love to hear more, a more comprehensive overview how we feel that particular department should be structured. It's over $100,000 that is coming into that RC, so that's a pretty substantial change. So I, at some point, I don't know when, and I don't know if others on the board are interested. I'd love to hear what the vision is for that.
Is it an explanation of the actual departmental changes within there? Because explaining that is, we can explain that, or is it the actual, the actual way we're structured, that, or supposed?
Well, I think it's kind of both. And I think I heard, we heard that maybe there are more resources that we need for that particular department and that we don't see in this budget. So I'd like to see, I'd like to hear more about how Rich envisions the RC, the finance department running, and how, you know, there's, it's a substantial amount of money, but it sounds like we may need more FTEs. And I'd like more detail, too. And I did send you that, more detail about comparison, comparing to other districts and what their finance departments look like. And it's not necessarily apples to apples when you just look at FTEs. So I don't know when that can happen, but I want to make sure you have the resources that you need. And I'd like to just get additional information.
So I have the chart that we can send out tomorrow of all the staff. So the 18% is relatively skewed, because it's, it's just taking resources from other RCs and reallocating them differently. So there's a decrease in RC 12, for example, and moving it in. There's a decrease in RC 15 and moving it in. So when you factor that in, it's really like a 3% increase. And part of that is also skewed, I started in September, so the revised budget reflects September through June. So that's partly skewed in that 3%. So it is, there's no new, new positions, whether it's the transportation coordinator or the secretary. It's just really reallocating them into different line items across the different RCs.
But I think it's, your department is changing, and I just would like to hear more about, I mean, I understand the transportation coordinator, what they're going to be doing. And then perhaps they'll be doing other things within the department. But I think, given the changes, and I know that there's an offset to that increase, but given the growth in that particular department, I just would like to know.
We could, we certainly could do that. The thumbnail, again, is not, is not the original design that we would have chosen. But we're doing more or less efficiently and trying, we're not going to propose something we don't think is going to work. That's the first thing, right, so, but, but yes, we can, we can.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
With that segue, let's look at the deferrals, because we keep hearing about thumbnails. Let's look at the deferral list.
Can I just comment on that, on the chair, just to start, just so as... So this deferral list, sort of priority list, first of all, it sort of ranks kind of, okay, well, if the board or community would like to add something back in or otherwise, what would you, what would you suggest and sort of what order? So that's really what it is. The bottom six or seven are not in any order, they're not prioritized, so don't read anything into them. A, they're not going to happen, I don't think, anyway, right, so, but they're not, they have not been prioritized, those. We just, we memorialize them there, because they were asked for. But you can see the administration tried to, well, we tried to do what you asked us to do, which is give us a wee sense of priority on the deferrals. And clearly, we wanted those things that were impacting the kids up here first, so we can, we can talk to them or otherwise.
Why don't you run down this list, at least the ones that you ranked?
Well, the ELL, we, we, we sort of talked about it in a little bit. It's up number one, okay, so let's...
Oh, you have no idea how much it's using gas.
All right, the health, the health teacher, Ellen did ask for a health teacher to help with those class sections. If you recall, whenever we did enrollment and so on, that came out. That essentially would change the class size from about 21 in a health class to 18, if, if we were to do that. In the budget already, we have reduced the health by .8, but this is, this would be adding in a 1.0. The kindergarten displays for first and second grade, those, as you know, are replacing the smartboards. And so we deferred it because of the cost. Project Lead the Way, we, Dr. De Silva spoke eloquently and alluded to that issue. And then the uniform replacements and the wrestling mats.
Are there board questions? Let's take, let's deal with those first six deferrals unless anyone has specific questions on the rest, because it sounds like the administration is not bringing the rest forward.
The bottom, should I view it as a wish list almost?
Yes, not a wish list, it's just, unless for some reason, let's say, the board said, we really would like to revisit that whole plan that you had for the counting. I just don't think that's going to happen, like, in terms of, but I can't, I can't put that above the ELL teacher, right?
So, so Alan, what I need to know, what is their agreement amongst the administration? Because what you had said on Saturday is like library powers, there really wasn't agreement with what that would do. So to me, it goes to Mr. Sini's point, that's kind of a wish list that hasn't been flushed out yet. I think, I think the question, and it came from this side of the room, so make sure I'm getting it right, was what have you deferred that we're going to, that we know we're going to see coming forward? And are we looking at evening out costs or understanding?
So uniforms would be a deferral, clearly.
It's a straight deferral, right? Whereas, if I understood you correctly, library powers isn't a deferral, there's not a plan for them yet.
It was, it's sort of mixed metaphors here in terms of new requests stroke deferrals. So it's, it can not clean the way it's presented. It's sort of like two categories here, the priorities that are renew and also sort of deferrals. So we've, we've sort of, we've sort of mixed them in the concepts.
So are the first six true deferrals?
Well, it depends how you would characterize an ELL teacher. I think that that's going to happen. Have you considered it a deferral? Yes.
But that's really, if I, on a definition basis, ELL is based on growing population, which is likely, but not certain.
Correct.
You are certain to replace uniforms, you are certain to replace wrestling mats.
The displays, you're certain to...
Correct, yep.
So, okay, Mr. Brown. What's the... On that top list, but the thing that doesn't seem like the other is the health teacher, because that was something that Ellen asked for. But if I'm understanding you correctly, it's not something necessarily that's being deferred for a year, so you could have 18 kids in the health section as opposed to 21. Because I would think, I would have to really understand the nature of those health classes and what the true educational benefit is from going to 21 or, or 18, just because of the, the way that that fits into the correct spectrum.
And you have to understand why we have elementary classes running at 23 and 24, and we're okay with that, but a health class can't be at 21.
Can I just jump in there, just because I've been part of that conversation? Before our new, before the new health curriculum, you might remember that some of those grade levels were actually together. So you might have ninth graders with 11th graders in a health class, et cetera. We changed that, so we now have ninth with ninth, 10th, 11th, and 12th. They have their own units of study. The class sizes are incredibly big, the topics are incredibly sensitive. It is not easy to teach with 21, 22, 23 sometimes in a health education class. And one of the reasons that Ellen put this forward, legitimately so, is because the health education teachers are saying, it doesn't matter when it comes to PE, but it does, or doesn't matter as much. But it does matter when you're talking about some of the topics in which children are talking about in a health education class, especially with some of the curriculum shifts that we've made. So it wasn't really about class size differences, like, you know, one would think. It really does boil down to what's being taught, what those groups look like. It's, it is different. And so the health education teachers are advocating for it. The principal and the assistant principal is advocating, are advocating for it.
So then, I think, and again, I'm going to pick up on Mr. Sini's point, there's two things. There's one thing when we hadn't heard about psychologists, right? We had no foreshadowing that there was a need emerging, right? And so, once we had a real acute need, we were faced with it, and we were kind of like, we had no foreshadowing. So I look at, ELL, we have to decide as a board if that's a current need or that's a foreshadowed need. Health teacher, is it a current need or a foreshadowed need? Uniform replacements are, we know it's a need, it's going to happen. The question is, which year does it happen? And so there, this list is a little bit of a hybrid. So why don't we go, does anyone have questions on the first six to better understand what they are? And is there anything around this budget that would help inform them?
I'm sorry, what is PLTW?
I'm trying to just lead the way, please.
So does anyone have any questions on those first six? Okay, I don't want to...
Dennis.
Dennis, I'm sorry.
Going to item three, the kindergarten displays and first grade displays. Do we have any contingency plan if those displays don't work in classrooms?
Not really. We, I don't, well, I don't see there, there's, I don't know that, I don't know how many smartboards we have sitting. We may have one or two sitting down in central services, I'm not quite sure. But I'm not aware of a contingency plan that's built in, maybe.
There are some spare smartboards, but they're not the displays that are recommended as the new technology.
So as part of the tech plan, will we see an equipment replacement program on February 11?
Well, I mean, it's in there, it's in the chart.
No, but I mean, like, we asked last time, like, can we have a full, kind of broad-based update? Well, is that something we should expect?
Not on, not the presentation that Dr. McGedigan is planning for. That's certainly something that I think we could ask to have shared out in terms of a memo, but that wouldn't be part of that presentation. This is more on the instructional side and less on the infrastructure side. So if the Board of Education wants that, I think we could plan for it, but that's not the presentation on the 11th.
I think you'd see a little bit of a dovetail, just, and it might not be now. We might be dealing in the reality of what we are, but if we're putting forward an educational plan, there's going to be necessary equipment and kind of what's our, where's the intersect there? But I think what I've heard from this table is we would like to see a holistic, I want to say like the uniforms, but we might be deferring those. And we want to see a plan of equipment so we can anticipate costs and kind of start to look either at economies of scale or just know what's coming up. Is that, is that, I think that's what I heard from the board on Saturday.
So there is, I mean, in furnace, in furnace, I'd like to know how far off the replacement cycle that has been presented that you want, because there is a replace, there is a rollout here of a cycle. If there's things that are different that we want to include in it, that's fine, but it's sort of here, sort of here.
So why don't we sit and look at that?
We want trends, anywhere we can see trends.
Dave wants trends, anywhere you can see trends. All right, so anything on the last, on the first six to understand, or do you feel...
I guess as a group, the only thing I would go back to is what we talked about on Saturday, what Mr. Zagratsky brought up, which is this idea, we know we have some big nuts coming next year. We know capital is going to be a big jump. If the bottom are also going to be coming at some point, are we better off taking some this year and not having such a big jump next year? I don't know. We will have our strategic plan done. Will there be big new initiatives? I, I don't, I don't know the answer, I don't have a magic ball, but I do think it's a conversation similar to that around capital projects that needs to be had on deferrals.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully our strategic plan will actually help inform some of us. But Mrs. McCannan, I'm sorry.
Well, I think the other, spinning it the other way, I think that, you know, we have an opportunity to be looking at some of the programs we're doing and deciding if we're happy with the spend, and it's also possible that we might have new efficiencies next year. So I think, I think both outcomes are possible.
Yeah, I wouldn't look at that bottom list as like, okay, we're really expecting to see this next year.
But you may see a couple, right?
Yeah, yes, you might, yep.
And they're big, most of them are, you know, more than half are big dollar numbers.
Okay.
What's the clarity on the middle school professional development? Maybe to see deferring professional development, what's...
I, I don't honestly think that we need that. It's not professional, it's not a, it's not really a profession, it's more of a, honestly, it's more of a culture-building experience. It's, I'm not, it's not a sort of, I wouldn't constitute it as a true professional learning experience. It's under, I think it's miscategorized in what is actually being asked for.
Okay, we ready to move on from this, or are there other questions? Okay, thank you. Please, please, everyone, send in your questions to Dr. Adley. Copy me so I can get it out to the board. We've had a little bit of like all-board, which precludes me being able to answer you back. So if you just copy either Duke and Dr. Adley and myself, or Dr. Adley and myself, we can then get it out to the whole board and then make sure the answers are ready for our public meeting. All right, moving on. Thank you, everyone, for getting those questions. And I know you actually incorporated a lot of the public's questions in there, which I think is very helpful. Once I find my agenda, again, we will move on, and I believe it is the master agenda that we are looking at. Presentation and discussion on the board master agenda, February through August of 2020. Dr. Adley.
Yes, so some of the discussions that we have had in terms of some of the events, whether it's the technology or otherwise, we've tried to update this to reflect it. I think we'll continue to do that as we look at whether it's athletics or other topics that need to be looked at reflectively. I wouldn't say we've covered 100% of it, but I think this is a work and draft, and certainly open to suggestions and modifications if you think we haven't included something that we've committed to, but we've tried to anticipate. Also, in furnace, I would like to thank Dr. De Silva, because we've tried to anticipate her departure and what can be done, needs to be done in advance and those types of things also.
Mrs. McCannan.
So I have no desire to specify when, but I have been taking notes throughout this conversation. I think there's a lot that we just talked about that needs to go on the master agenda. So I would like to just read my list, and then if you all would, please work through.
Yeah, sure.
We talked about funding for extracurriculars that are non-athletic. The, I think there's, the bus conversation breaks down into different things. There's the actual bus policy and the relevance of that policy, whether or not it matches administrative practice. And then there's also the, the radii, the bus radii. I'd like to see goals and objectives come back, we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, so that we can... so that we can amend those as appropriate. We've talked about a security update, and I know that that may need to be an executive session, but I think just in the interest of having a document that manages our understanding of what we're all working towards, I'd like to see it on there, a security update, including cybersecurity. And I think it also needs to include, I'm not opining in the least, but I think it needs to include SROs at elementary school. And we just talked about accounting for security from a financial perspective. We just talked about ELL. I think there's a conversation about the back office, which is what does finance look like? I think we also talked about a couple, last time we met, modeling turnover and how that could work. So I, I think there's some back office things. And the last thing we talked about during the contract is coming up with a negotiation process that the entire board is aware of and agrees to. You know, in terms of setting up milestones for the negotiation process, not, not the details, but making sure that the whole board understands the process that the negotiations committee goes through, and at what points it comes to the whole board.
Yes. So just as a reminder for the master agenda, it's kind of a layout, and so any of these, we can pop up on any agenda. Master agenda gives a guiding principle of where we are and general timelines. Mr. Burke.
So a year ago, we made a substantial commitment to having greater mental health in the schools. And I think as we approach that year anniversary, it would be good to hear on how they're doing, how those resources are going, what their caseloads are looking like, what the differential is, because I recall that there was, you know, great concern that, you know, the general population of students wasn't being served because the resources were elsewhere. So let's see what those numbers are looking, let's see what their days are, are looking like.
Can I just add on that too? I want to, I would love to hear if there's any impact on other staff as well. In other words, are we alleviating the burden that was carried by someone else? And how, how the transition is just going in general?
And I'd like to add to that as well, is I personally would like to hear case studies, and as much as I love data on this particular point, I'd love to hear about how children are being impacted or affected, maybe is a better word, by the additional psychologists.
Okay. Any other agenda items from board members?
I feel like they squeezed it in.
Dr. Adley and I will do our best to get all these in.
Can I just add, can I add to one of, on one of Jill's, the negotiation process? Well, I think what would be helpful is a sort of a timeline too, like, as we're starting the process, this needs to happen, and then just so there's something to go to. That way, if you're new to the process, like, I'm going to be, you know, okay, this is the first step, this is the second step, just to give a really clear, defined process. I think that, just to that.
Sorry, maybe it's not appropriate for you, but the strategic plan's not in any of this. Is that, does that get thrown on the...
So the plan, the, the plan can be reported out under others, can be reported out under the current agenda, understanding committees or otherwise, there's board members here on it. Dr. Lemons will also come here, so that we could schedule that, because he said he would come. But again, board members can update, but he did say he would come and give up periodic, so if we want to put that in, we can put that in.
Yeah, kind of like the milestones and those.
I would ask him one at the best time, who thinks?
Okay.
Right, as your work progresses.
You can also head in there, we're going to have to start weekly.
Oh, friends, we might be meeting.
We are.
Yeah, which is...
Dr. De Silva, can you stay with me a bit longer? I'm just, I'm just... I'm just saying.
Which, you know, we, we, I'm sorry, we left the budget discussion, but we said we would leave open whether we think we need a meeting for January twenty-first, and we do need to make a decision on that. It would be a special meeting, but do we feel that we need a meeting on the twenty-first? We need to hear from board members.
We did not hear from the RTM, do we need to do that?
Yeah, I thought, I think they're coming on the twenty-first.
No, Jack, you and I know that you're coming that day, but the board needs to actually put it on the schedule.
Well, it is on our agenda, I mean...
I think, no, I think we had it, we had a schedule, did we hold it?
Yeah, I think we did, yep.
I added it.
Yep.
I added, it's on here. It is a special meeting, but it's...
My apologies, I thought it was still needed to be approved as a special meeting. I had heard from Jack and Claire that they wanted to come, I just thought I, the board hadn't put it on their schedules yet? So my apologies. We will move on to the discussion and possible action of appointing a, oh, I'm sorry.
That was a yes, that was a yes, wasn't it?
Wait, wait, I'm, so we are meeting on...
The twenty-first, yeah, it's, it's on the, I'm sorry, my apologies. I thought we had left it as TBD, and we put it on the actual calendar. So we are meeting, be here on the twenty-first.
That's next.
Thank you.
Let's see, Nadine doesn't have it. Nadine doesn't have it worn.
We have time. Yeah, I'll make sure she knows, it's on the schedule.
We, it is there, on the twenty-first. If not, it will be at town hall, just so you all know. I don't actually think she has it on her calendar. So we need to move on to discussion and possible action, the appointment of the chair to the Board of Education Building Committee for the Hinley Elementary Roof Replacement Project and the Board of Education Building Committee for the Holmes Elementary Roof and Skylight Replacement Project. Typically, this is handled differently in that the board, because the state requires the board to have a building committee on these things, the town allows us to be the building committee. The, this time, the Board of Selectmen asked that we specifically appoint a chair and a vice chair. They wanted a point person when Mr. Lynch goes, rather than just talking to him on it. I would, would like to nominate Dennis Maroney as the chair and Dave Brown as the vice chair. I'm happy to take any other nominations.
Are they chairing both?
Both.
Both, I think it's just easier. I mean, Mike is going to report out on these, he's got all his vendors together. We, we will take the appointments, we can make the motion, joint, and I can talk to Kate, and she can fill them in. We don't have to take them separately, I don't think.
Well, I was going to do Dennis and Dave separately.
Yeah, but for each committee, right?
Well, yeah, that's what I'll do.
Okay. I'll follow your motion, how you wrote it out. So I'd like to nominate Dennis Maroney for the chair of the Building Committee for the Hinley Elementary School Roof Replacement Project and the Building Committee for the Holmes Elementary Roof Project and Skylight Replacement Project. May I have a second? Mrs. Stein, all in favor? That is unanimous? Uh, eight, Mr. Brown has left.
It's unanimous for those who are here.
Yeah. We're gonna, Dave has already said he'd be willing to do it, so we're going to nominate and elect him in his...
We should have talked to him.
It tells you, if you leave a meeting early, you may get...
He said he was okay, talk to him.
So I would like to nominate David Brown as the vice chair of the Board of Education Building Committee for the Hinley Elementary Project and the Holmes Elementary Roof.
You're leaving, you're leaving.
Mr. Sini and Mr. Burke, all in favor? And that is unanimous. We will move on to personnel items.
Who have been motion for that, for Dennis?
Nope, I can't motion. Mr. Janine?
Okay. Mrs. Stein.
There is a revised P R at your seat and some in the back, and a thank you to Stacey T A for finding and pointing out that James Nichols was resigning from Royal, not from Ox Ridge. Three other people who reviewed it, totally missed it. And with the addition of Rob Trefon's retirement notice.
Okay. May I have a personnel, I mean, may I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report dated January fourteenth with the changes as noted? Mrs. Stein and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? That is unanimous. Public comment.
Hi, I'm Joan Kanlian, K A N L I A N, nine McLaren Road, and I'm co-chair of the DHSPA. Following up on some of the questions and answers from our January fourth meeting, we fully support the board's established uniform replacement schedule and ask that something that so directly impacts the students really be adhered to. And so we, we ask and appreciate your careful consideration of the uniform replacement schedule. That is very closely connected to the issue of parity among the sports, and we ask why does the football team have a sophomore team when no other sports team does? And so, some questions came up earlier about cut versus no-cut sports. I think it's really important that we establish some policy and some guidelines so there's parity that directly impacts the students, that directly impacts how they feel about their experience at DHS. I appreciate the number provided that about ten thousand dollars is brought in in gate fees from the football and basketball games. What is that money spent on? How is that, how's that money spent? Following up on the transportation costs on page eighty-five of the budget, we'd like to see a breakdown of how many games are played and how many buses are used by each team during the season. Some of those transportation numbers raised some questions. And finally, following up on the question raised about clubs and activities, Appendix E does lay out and identify the advisors for each club and activity, but that's not what we asked for. We actually were asking for a printout of the dollar amount in each sub-account in the student activities fund. So how much is in Model Congress? How much is in DECA? How much is in each of the sports accounts? That's the question that we would like explored, not, we appreciate, but we don't... The question wasn't about the advisors, and that was the information that was provided in Appendix E. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, can I end, oh, sorry, this is Best, didn't mean to cut you off.
Julie Best, thirty-eight Red Rose Circle, and co-chair of CDSP. I just had a couple odds and ends from this evening's discussion. Do we know where all our ELP classes are going to be located next year? It's, I've heard, it's my understanding, that we're not going to be able to have our ELP classes at Ox Ridge. So do we know where we're going with those kids and that there is room for them? On the topic of devices, now that we have the insurance programs this year, does that change anything as far as the district's responsibility or costs to replace or repair devices? And is that factored into how many extras we're buying now or will need to have over the course of the year? Is there anything to be scrubbed out of that, I guess, if we now have insurance that parents are paying for on these devices to replace them and repair them? I don't know what the percentages are for how much, how many people are insuring them or breaking them. On the world language conversation, both for middlesex and at the high school, I, I wasn't clear if, if the timing on having the department come back in the fall means necessarily that there won't be anything curricular instituted prior to the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Some of the ideas that have been talked about, are we looking that far out before any of that will be in place in those schools? And on the DHS Clubs and Councils, that might have been an answer to my question, which I did appreciate, because I did want to understand what was in the budget for the Clubs and Councils as part of understanding what wasn't in the budget. So I appreciate that that information was there. I understand that there's more information people are looking for, but I also wanted to say thank you that we're talking about having a bigger conversation about that in the future. That's it, thanks so much.
Teresa about twenty-two Circle Road. I'd like to thank you for including the out-of-district enrollment number in the packet tonight, but I would like to see that by grade. And I would also like, for us going forward in the spirit of transparency, to always have those numbers in our enrollment numbers. I see that you provide it, I guess, to the state or whatever NECP is, but that you don't provide it in the public documents to us, and I would like to see it provided in the public documents to us going forward, whenever we talk about enrollment.
Any other public comment? With that, can I entertain a motion to adjourn? Mr. Burke and Mr. Maroney, all in favor? That is unanimous, thank you, everybody.